Good evening, it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting of the board selection to order. I'm gonna start with the pledge of allegiance and then attendance, and I have a couple of added agenda items. Selectmen must go, would you like to leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the board of selectmen are here in presence. I have a number of added agenda items tonight, product of some folks getting back to us with either information or documentation, past the publication date for the agenda, but I want to just keep business moving. So, under Agenda Item 7B, I would like to add a number three, which is the reappointment of Adam Ian to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a regular member term expiring July 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
May I be seconded on favor of adding that?
Aye.
Opposed? 7B for the reappointment of Richard P. Pippen Jr. for the same committee and term. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I be seconded in any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under nine each, I'd like to add a community center bond resolution. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
May I be seconded in any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And under nine I, I'd like to add the building official coverage MOUs. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Various news. Alright, so let's go on to approval finish in January of January, June 2nd, 2022. Everybody's had a chance to review them.
I want to make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes up to 2nd, 2022 as consented. And then I'd like to make an apology.
Is there a second? Second. Motion's been made in seconded, great.
Yes, on page sixteen and seventeen, I owe you an apology. I was sitting on the beach, pusing my cellphone, and I thought page sixteen was missing something. When it ended, first selectman suggested the board will discuss this under. And then the next page involved isolated said executive session, and then there was documentation under the executive session. And I hastily, without continuing reading, said why is executive session printed out? So it's just a continuational line that I thought was missing something, it was gonna be handled under executive session. So I apologize for that email.
Yes. Also, missing from the adjournment time.
So may I ask you, are we adding the executive session information to those minutes or not? We are doing the six.
That wasn't executive session, that portion, but there is executive session at the end where the time is included.
But we did not add the, only you would come out of executive session and state what you did. Do you want to add that information or just leave it as?
If you go to page twenty-six, Peg, it says to go into executive session at nine forty-five and.
Yeah, but there isn't an adjournment.
There isn't an adjournment, you're absolutely right, I missed that.
Usually, you come out, you say that you're taking no further action in your journey, or you are taking action. I'm assuming you took no action because you would have.
We did take no action.
Thank you. Should we add that? May I amend the minutes and then you're okay or no?
I would say we should amend the minutes that no action was taken.
Okay. And can I say what time you came out?
It was almost eleven. We came out at about ten fifty-five PM.
Okay, so may I say that Jason adjourned the meeting at ten fifty-five?
Yes.
Yep. Any other corrections?
We'll try to do a better job of getting that information to get back, I apologize.
No, and it was my, that's the way I do the minutes for myself, Marie. And it was more important for me to get the minutes out there with all that information than to have, to be missing the closing, so I'm guessing this motion will take care of that for you.
Or if you don't hesitate to give us a phone call.
So, so the minutes have been amended, there's a motion in the second, all in favor of these minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May I ask a second, please?
Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you.
June twenty-first.
Make a motion to accept the special meeting minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Is there a second? Second. May I be seconded in any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
I abstain.
Abstain.
Two, two in favor, two extensions. Public participation, this is one of the public's two opportunities to address the board's selectmen for items on the agenda, or off the agenda for that matter. I'm gonna first turn to the folks who are here in the room. If you could address yourself by name and address, please, for the record, that would be great. And then after the folks in the room have had the opportunity, I'll turn anybody who's joined as far as so. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Please identify yourself with your name and your address. Is there anyone online who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications. First and foremost is a proclamation that I issued commemorating Southern Auto's seventy-fifth anniversary. I'm gonna talk about this more in my selectmen's report, but you can see the proclamation that was done, it was put on a pretty elaborate plaque that was presented during their seventy-fifth anniversary auction. They have been a major employer in the town of East Windsor for almost all of that time. It had a great economic benefit, it had a great charitable benefit. And one of the remarkable things that I had the good fortune of witnessing, in the span of five minutes, they raised a hundred thousand dollars per charity. So there were four charities that will benefit from that, and I can remember two or three of them, but I know I can't remember four. So that hundred thousand will be passed around between the Five Quarter Cupboard, Alex's Lemonade Stand, Connecticut Children's Medical Center, and the one I can't remember. What they did is they auctioned off bid numbers one and two, and in the span of five minutes, they raised a hundred grand. It was a remarkable sight to see, and I think that really is a good indication of the presence that they've had in the community for the seventy-five years they've been there. So I wanted to make sure that the town was recognizing that. In November of 2021, I wrote a letter to Commissioner Giuliani asking for, actually, I'm sorry, on October seventh of 2021, I wrote a letter to Commissioner Giuliani at DOT asking them to look into the feasibility of installing a crosswalk between the warehouse point fire district on Bridge Street and Geysers Plaza. This is a follow-up letter from the department, basically saying they looked at the conditions in proximity to that intersection between State Route 510 and Bridge Street, and that the area where we had indicated is not a feasible alternative or a feasible location for a crosswalk, but I do commend DOT for taking the time to evaluate that and to circle back with a response, that was very much appreciated. Many, if not most, people are probably aware of an article that ran in an online publication called The Connecticut Insight Investigator. It's an extension of the Yankee Institute, and they reported on a story that about an investigation that revealed some untoward behavior in a local town department. So I put out a statement that is for the record there, and it's available for anybody to see. I will go on to resignations. We have a bunch of people either changing seats, coming on board or stepping off this week, and that I think is more product of anything. Well, it's a product of a number of things. So first and foremost is resignation of Erica Jerome as a member of the Arts and Culture Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Erica Jerome from the Arts and Culture Commission with regret.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. Okay, this next one is a little bit of shuffling the deck chairs here. So Frank Gouy has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll say on and off, but almost always off for a very long time. He stepped down for a little bit to an alternate position, and then when vacancies came up that couldn't initially be filled, he agreed to fill it a full voting member. As a full voting member, he has since asked to be returned to his alternate member state now that there is an alternate on the board who is interested stepping up to a full member. That's that Dave Reardon?
Lee Sin.
Dave Lee Sin. At any rate, the new member has dove in with both feet and is really getting involved, and Frank sees this as a good time for him to kind of take a little bit of a step back without relinquishing involvement entirely. So you're gonna have here his resignation as an alternate, and in a couple of minutes, we're gonna have his appointment as an alternate. I have a motion to accept his resignation.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Frank Gouy as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The same thing is happening here with Gabriella Resto. She is stepping down as an associate member of the East Windsor Diversity Council. She is hoping to, in just a moment, be appointed as a full member of that. So may I have a motion to accept her resignation?
Move to accept the resignation of Gabriella Resto as a Diversity Council Associate Member.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, here. Dave Lee Sin's resignation as a Planning and Zoning Commission alternate is next.
Move to accept the resignation of David Lee Sin as a Planning and Zoning Commission alternate member.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're on to reappointments. There, we have two of the.
So four of them, we just do those ones?
Yeah.
I can make a motion, we reappoint Heather Spencer, Peter Larisse, Adam Ian, and Richard Pippen to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, regular members for terms expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Sarah, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that brings us to new appointments. So Val Kilinski is interested in getting involved in the Agriculture Commission. She's also interested in getting involved in the Parks and Recreation Commission, although there is not currently a vacancy for that. So we'll take the appointment for agriculture.
I'll move to appoint Valerie Kilinski on the Agriculture Commission as an ultimate member for a term expiring August first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Appointing Gabby Resto as a full member of the Diversity Council. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Gabriella Resto as a regular member of the Diversity Council expiring August twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, here. Appointing Frank Gouy as an alternate member of Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Frank Gouy to Planning and Zoning as an ultimate member for a term expiring October first, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? So, here. The appointment of Denise Menard as a member of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint Denise Menard as a regular member of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, here. Appointing Dave Lee Sin as a full member of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to appoint David Lee Sin as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring November first, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Also.
Motion has been made in seconded.
Just because I'm like with the faces and names, I wanna make sure, just Dave Lee Sin is. The owner of.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure.
He was here earlier.
I saw, I just wanna make sure that's who it was, because we absolutely have died into the board, so I just wanna make sure I had the right person.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that's all. Okay. There are a number of things that we're gonna need to talk about in executive session tonight, and then take action afterwards. So I'm gonna kind of jump around a little bit here. Could we please take up Agenda Item 7B?
I'll move to take. I'm sorry, ninety. I mean, I say, item nine B, discuss improved application for exception alcohol beverages to include Tara Dipito.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, this is the, so we're on Agenda Item nine B, the application for alcohol exemption at the East Windsor Park Pavilion. Tara Dipito and Enfield resident would like to hold a graduation party there on July thirtieth. Alcohol would be served to adults, not to the mostly children who will be there. Well, today, since we've started taking advantage of the provision in the ordinance that allows for this to happen today, I'm not aware that we have any problems at all. So that.
How do you get it to be bigger?
So, any discussion on the application request?
This is all, all day, nine AMs.
Okay, the rentals are all day.
Yep.
So as an example, I'm having a non-alcoholic party for my one-year-old daughter on Sunday. We have the full-day rental of that side of the pavilion, but parties can be from like three to four thirty or something.
Okay.
You can't stay up much longer than that.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for alcohol beverages from July thirty, twenty twenty-two at East Windsor Park Pavilion off the Red Six Station here.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine C, discussion of capital improvement allocation recommendations submitted by CIP. Adam, you're the chairman of the CIP committee, you wanna explain to us what your recommendations are? Sure. I'll come up to put in. Sure.
Alright, so we initially asked for 1.4 million back in the fall, I believe it was October, before the budget passed, before that whole process, to kind of speed through a little bit. Budget passes, we get an allocation of nine hundred and fifty million, so, or nine hundred and fifty thousand, sorry. So, maybe if I speak, it'll come true, I don't know. So we had to go back to our list, cut a few items. So the list consists of approximately forty-five, fifty total projects all across the board. Each department head, board chairman, whatever the cases comes before us, kind of pleads their case for the allocations, rank them, we as a committee go through them, we rank them pretty. We try and take any personal bias out of it, we try and do it by numbers, we have a formula, I think we've talked about that before in the past. So when you come up with a list of recommendations, as I mentioned, the initial sweep when we went through, I guess I could back up and say even before we went through it, the total was, I believe, over twelve million was a toll of all the requests that came in to us, just to give you a kind of an idea of what we're dealing with. Like I mentioned, the first time we narrowed it down, got to 1.4 million post-budget passing, we needed to hit nine hundred and fifty thousand. We did that, I sent the list over to everyone, so I'm not sure if you want me to go through all of it, but it's.
About three recommendations?
The ones that we recommended funding. It's pretty similar to what you've seen in past years. Police Department for Vehicles, Public Works for Pavement Management, and Public Works Vehicle Replacement were the top three. Next, if I add a fourth one to that. No, I'm sorry, those were the top ones, so that's where the majority of the money went, specifically Pavement Management. That alone was almost exactly half of the allocation. We were able to pick off a few other projects that came before us. Townwide drainage, some allocation for chip ceiling, some roads. The GIS system that's ongoing. The revaluation, that's one of those that you pretty much have to do, that's standard, that'll be in there every year. Tanks and fuel pump at Public Works, those need to be replaced, so we're able to put a little fund in there just to kind of get the process started.
Just to be clear, when that ultimately goes, we're gonna have to replace it real quick.
Really quick, yeah, that's not gonna be pretty, so ten thousand is not much.
Marker, I mean, you put a marker on it.
That's exactly what it was, that was our, kind of our philosophy or our mindset, that we gotta get this started with something, so it's in there. Sidewalks comes up every year, fifty thousand was allocated to that. And I think the last one was twenty-four thousand for parking wreck for Gator utility vehicle. It goes quick, I mean, just those items that I mentioned, you're up to nine hundred and fifty thousand. Some of the bigger projects, we're hoping for a little bit of help with bonding, perhaps, they're just out of the scope of CIP. If we're gonna get nine hundred and fifty thousand, there's just no way we can replace a high school roof here, for example, and have anything left over. So I'm not sure if you have questions on specific items, if you want us to go through the process a little bit, or how I can help you all out.
I think we're familiar with process, anybody have any questions on a process perspective? Anybody have any questions on the recommendations?
Right, well, I attended guys' meetings, I'm well aware.
Yes.
And I want to commend you guys for getting through it that day evening. But I have a concern, fact that reduced one, I believe it's one and a half piece vehicles. Their board made decisions based upon the fact that they had an accident in the vehicle which replaced, they had another vehicle that came in that was quite new, and possibly a third vehicle from wherever. But I think it's too low in reduction for them, because we try to put them on a schedule so that vehicles are constantly rotating, and in fact, it takes longer and longer now to prepare the vehicles, and the cost of vehicles now are gonna start going up again. I just think we're doing a disservice to the police department.
Other comments?
Just a question, as far as the police department for the female locker rooms, are they currently using the emergency management center for that?
No.
So there is no locker rooms for women officers to hire anymore?
No, that's, that's gone. There was one who cycled out.
That we would just have room for one, and then we still be in the same.
Right. It still is an issue, it's not a, it's not as urgent of an issue as it was, say, three months ago, or when the submission was put, is a better way of categorizing it.
Okay.
But it is an issue that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
And I know I'm stating the obvious, but it's not to say that any of these were not important, that we didn't fully fund them, or that they didn't get any funding, you know, like I said, we started with four or five dozen projects, and nine fifty only goes so far. It was painful, you know, Marie was there, she kind of saw us trying to get through that last meeting we had when we got the nine fifty, and how do we reallocate that, so. It's not to say something that didn't get funding, or maybe only got ten thousand, didn't make the cut. It actually made two or three cuts to get to that point, it just fell short to very, very end.
I always appreciate the work that the CIP does to go through all the projects. It's definitely something that it should be commended for going through the process, and I know it's not an easy thing to do to pick things, but I appreciate your prioritizing here.
One more question, did you, I hear you referred to, you just said they took the money out for the locker?
It wasn't funded, no.
On here it said.
Uh.
Here it said, it's twenty-three, three thirty-two.
No.
I'm looking at the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but over here, it shows Sarah, they didn't reduce, this is where they reduced all of the savings.
It's not how much that was.
This was your regional allocation, and this is what they, oh, okay, gotcha.
The fact that it's in that second column over.
Yeah.
Means that it did make the cut, actually.
Yeah.
In the fall, but then when we were reduced.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it went to the last cut, and to get to drop four hundred plus thousand.
Yeah.
We had to lose a few things, unfortunately. And thank you for your comments, Sarah, it's a good committee, this cycle, very diverse backgrounds for a variety of reasons, and we didn't really get public participation, I don't think anyone from the public jumped into any of our meetings, but we had a few liaisons that jumped in to help. I think everyone from the committee would say they had a voice or an opportunity to voice, so it was a, is a good committee.
Thank you for your attention.
You bet. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so they're before us, we can accept their recommendations, we can alter them, we can, I guess we can reject them, I'm not sure why or do that. What do we wanna do?
Make a motion to accept the recommendations.
There's a second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion, I'm sorry. Votes two-two, I'll vote yes, so the vote will be three-two, can you affirm it? At this point in time, I'd like to take up item number twelve, executive session. If I could have a motion to go into executive session at seven twenty-eight, we'll leave the folks here in the room, we can go use my office for the executive session, we'll be back as quickly as we can.
I'll move that we go into executive session at seven twenty-eight, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session, we'll be back as soon as we're.
What do we need with us?
Alright, it's eight twenty-four, we're coming out of executive session. I asked if we have a motion to take up Agenda Item nine A, discussion discussed and set the rate for the town attorney.
Move, we take up discussion, item nine A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so a request has been submitted by woman and commonly for a rate increase of ten dollars per hour. They, we have done an assessment of the number of hours that we've used typically over the last three years, and that would keep us within our existing people budget. Any questions or comments on that? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the hourly rate increase that's at a forty-five dollar an hour.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Various news. Opposed, Harry's name is.
What is the number?
We couldn't hear. Three forty-five.
Thank you.
Um, nine, we're in the, we're back to the regular call of the agenda, so we're gonna take up agenda item ninety. Discussion of the Scout Hall lease amendments, um, so that's in your packets. It's it's titled Second Amendment to the Lease because it incorporates the previous amendment that was made to the existing lease. This has been a very collegial and friendly negotiation between the town and the Scout Hall Building Committee that will allow. Uh, for the construction or the renovation and construction of a community center. Um, on the Scout Hall premises, renovating that building, expanding it. Um, and really allowing it to kind of meet the needs of our our changing community. Mr. Anderson, I really want to thank you and your team for for the good collaboration on that. Um, the, especially the expediency, the conversations we've had, and the work that this represents will allow us to make sure that we can get this. Uh, to the ballot for voter consideration in November, and I really appreciate it. We are considering this as a partnership, it is. Um, may I have a motion?
Make a move, motion to authorize the first selectmen to sign the amendment to the lease agreement with. Between the Town of East Windsor and the Scout Hall Building Committee Incorporated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I am in favor. Um, okay, nineteen is a a compendium to that last item. So, the Second Amendment to the Lease suggests that there will be a memorandum of understanding between the Town of East Windsor and the Scout Hall Building Committee. Um, the purpose of that is to codify that we are memorializing the mission of the Scout Hall Building Committee. And adopting it as our own, um, and that is what is outlined here in these six conditions before you. Um, their mission, I'm gonna paraphrase Paul, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um, their mission is basically to provide a space for um youth groups in the Town of East Windsor. We we are going to adopt that and expand that to include um a place for our seniors, civic groups and youth groups. So it'll be a a multi-purpose facility, it'll be used uh more expansively than than. It has been to date or that our current facility is allowed for, um, and this this more memorandum of understanding. Outlines uh the conditions by which the building will be operated, yes, sir.
Minor addition to that mission, it is without cost.
Yes.
I mean, you have mission statement. That's important.
Yep, and we will be, we will be honoring that.
Without cost, there's no doubt.
Is there a motion?
To approve the MOU between the Town of East Windsor and the East Windsor Scout Hall. Building Committee and authorize the first selectmen to sign it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I am in favor. Um, nine F, discussion of a shared cost agreement between town and the Board of Education. Um, so, this was incorporated, this was included in the agenda, but it was handed out late because. Um, Dr. Tooten and I were still working on the last fine tuning of memorandum, but I want to say, I think this is a really significant step. Um, between the town and the Board of Education in memorializing the services that are provided to the school district by the town. And also, I want to thank them for um coming to the table and offering financial compensation that hopefully will allow us to bring on an additional. Maintainer that would, that would supplement some of the work that's done. Uh, this is an arrangement that's been going on for forty years or so, um, and. It's, this is, I believe, the first time that it's ever been memorialized in a document, that's just protecting the interests of everybody involved. Um, I'm really grateful for the the collegial way that we've come to this, and I'm asking you guys to review it and authorize my signature entering into the brief.
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum agreement um between the Town of East Windsor and Board of Education. And authorize this weapon um with the corruption of the known sequence.
Yeah.
To sign.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine G, tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling seven hundred dollars and one cent.
Second.
Uh, any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So, carry. Okay, nine H, um, nine H is a a late addition as well. Um, this is the resolution that we need to do in order to take the agreement for. Um, the community center and the memorandum of understanding. Advance it to the Board of Finance and to a town meeting, and ultimately recess that town meeting to a referendum that will be held in conjunction with the gubernatorial election. On November eighth, this is a question from my perspective, and I think shared by the board. Um, that this is a question of high public concern, and so it should be addressed by as many voters as possible. Um, and that involves a high turnout election which we will have, um, on November. So, with that, Selectman Baker, we're here to read the resolution.
Okay, bear with me. County of East Windsor Board of Selectmen Resolution, Resolution appropriating five million dollars for costs associated with an addition. And renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center Project. Authorizing a one thousand, I mean, one million, two hundred thousand transfer from the town's capital and non-recurring fund. To finance a portion of the appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the balance of the appropriation. Whereas the Town of East Windsor, Connecticut, the town desires to appropriate five million dollars. For costs associated with an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center. And whereas the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance desire to use up to one point two million dollars. Of the town's capital and non-recurring fund balance to finance a portion of the appropriation. And whereas the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance desire to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance the balance of the appropriation. And whereas the Town Charter provides that all on-force authorizations require the approval of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance. And the town meeting, and whereas at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen held on July seventh, and on a motion by board member. Uh, to be determined, and seconded by board member to determine, determine, the following resolutions were adopted. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of East Windsor hereby approves and recommends to the Board of Finance. By the sum of five million dollars be appropriated for the cost of. Of an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center, including but not limited to the cost of materials, construction, renovation. Site improvements and restoration, permitting and inspection, and the purchase and installation of equipment and furnishings. And all alterations, repairs, and improvements in connection where therewith, as well as engineering, architectural, and temporary, permanent financing costs. And to meet set appropriations and in lieu of a, of a tax, therefore authorize that up to one point two million of the town's capital. And non-recurring fund balance be used to finance a portion of the appropriation and authorize bonds to be issued. Pursuant to chapter one oh nine of the Connecticut General Statutes, as amended, the Town Charter or any other provision. Of law there to enabling an amount not to exceed three million, eight hundred thousand. Or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants or other sources of funds available, therefore, to finance the balance of such appropriation. And to the, the first selectmen and the town treasurer be authorized to issue and sell temporary notes of the town. Not to exceed three million, eight hundred thousand dollars in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of such bonds. And determined that the the amount, date, dated maturity, interest rate, form, and other details of such notes or bonds pursuant to chapter one oh nine. Of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, the Town Charter or any other provision of law there. I'm sorry, this last one.
Up page two, end of the first paragraph of the motion.
Or any other provision of law thereto enabling, provided that the proceeds from the sale of such notes shall be used for set purpose. And the first selectmen and the town treasurer will sign the bonds or notes by either manual or facsimile signatures. And that the law firm of Pullman and Conley LLC is the designed at, designated as the bond council to approve the legality of the bonds or notes. And the first selectmen is authorized to designate a bank or trust company to be the certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent of the bonds or notes. To sell the bonds or notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds or notes into. Their acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. If the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution are issued on a taxes and basis, the first selectmen and the town treasurer are authorized to bind the town pursuant to such representations. Of covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes. Including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. If the bonds are issued on a taxable basis, it is hereby determined that the project is in the public interest. And the first selectmen is authorized to apply for state and federal grants related to the project and is authorized to execute all agreements, contracts, certificates. And other documents necessary for the completion of the project, in financing of the project. Be it further resolved that the town reasonably expects to incur expenditures in connection with the capital projects. For which a general functional description is described above. The town reasonably expects to reimburse itself for the cost of the expenditures with the proceeds of general obligation bonds and notes of the town described above. The maximum principal amount of such debt, debt, both bonds and notes is not expected to exceed three million, eight hundred dollars. This declaration of official.
Eight hundred thousand.
Uh, excuse me, three million, eight hundred thousand dollars. This declaration of official intent is a declaration of official intent made pursuant to the Treasury Regulation Section one point one five zero dash two. Be it further resolved that should the Board of Finance approve the appropriation recommended above for the project. At a special town meeting is here by call to be held on. A date to be determined. That's the twenty to twenty, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty PM at Town Hall, eleven Ryce Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut. To consider the resolution recommended and approved by the Board of Selectmen at its meeting held on July seven. Two thousand twenty-two, and the Board of Finance on July thirteen to two thousand twenty-two, to appropriate. Three million, eight hundred thousand dollars and authorize bonds and notes to fund such appropriation for the project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to section seven dash seven of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended. And the Charter of the Town hereby removes the item described above on the call of the town meeting for submission to the electors. And voters entitled to vote on the, at the election on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, during the hours from six o'clock. AM and eight o'clock PM, such referendum vote to be held at the town's two polling places under the following heading. Shall the Town of East Windsor appropriate five million dollars for the cost of, of an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center? Authorize that up to one million, two hundred thousand dollars of the town's capital and non-recurring fund balances. Be, is to be used to finance a portion of the appropriation and authorize bonds to be issued in an amount. Not to exceed three million, eight hundred thousand dollars to finance the balance of such appropriation. The moderator of the town meeting shall adjourn such town meeting after reasonable discussion of such item and conclusion of such other business. As may be properly come before the town meeting and order such vote by a voting machine in accordance with this resolution. Section seven dash seven of the General, Connecticut General Statutes and Town Charter. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the town clerk to prepare and print a concise explanatory text of the question. To be submitted to the voters at referendum on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, concerning the project specifying the intent and person. Purpose of the project in accordance with section nine dash three sixty-nine B of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Thank you, sir, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, um, to be clear and for discussion's sake, the cost of the project is expected to be five million dollars. One point two million dollars has already been designated by the Board of Finance and set aside as a capital non-recurring fund. Lowering the total project cost, well, lowering the bond obligation of the total project cost from five million to three point eight million. It also in the resolution, um, indicates that there is a potential of receiving. Um, other bonds or other grants or or state or federal funds associated with that, several of those are in process. So the three point eight million dollar number is the high watermark for what would be part. Any further discussion on this?
Um, I just have a question.
Yes.
Should the, should the Riverd Town Treasurer be replaced with Finance Director? It's uh, a page two, and I think it's three times.
Second paragraph?
Yeah. It's, I'll, I'll confirm the term.
Okay.
Should I amend my motion?
Yeah.
I took a form with charge.
Yeah.
I amend my motion to conform with charter, it's changing Town Treasurer to Finance Director, is the charter.
I'll amend my second as well.
Um, so the, the motion and the second are on the amendments to the motion, not on the motion itself, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're back to the question on the floor, which is adoption of the resolution, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I vote yes. Thank you all very much for, for your help with this, this is fantastic. Um, okay, so now we're on to, I, building official coverage MOUs, so our new building official starts on. Uh, I think I said, uh, July twenty-sixth, um, in the interim. Um, because he's gonna be on vacation before he starts working with us, he's provided a couple of means for. Um, coverage in the event that we should need it, there are MOUs presented, um, if anybody would like to make a motion to accept those and authorize my signature. I would love to hear.
I'll make a motion that we accept the normal grant of understanding to treat counties, Windsor, and, um, two individuals. Do I think they're any?
Yep.
On Mark Duddy and Ian Hansen, um. And authorize the first selectmen on sign.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
Right.
My comments, reports. Okay. So, I'll tell you, my selectmen's report is fifteen hundred words, um, so I'm gonna pick and choose parts of this. Rather than go through the whole thing, and I'll post, post the whole thing on, um, Facebook and and provide it to, to the record. Um, I talked about the, the work done around approval for the community center that was done tonight, and I thank you all very much for your support of that. Uh, on July twenty, on June twenty-fifth, the town held a dog licensing and rabies vaccination clinic for local residents and their pets. More than forty-five families particip- uh, more than forty families participated, I want to thank Town Clerk Amy Lamb. And our local animal control officers, Katie Curtis and Kathy Diaco Kane, for their excellent work organizing the event. They've already started planning next year's event, um, so I, I, it was a great success, and I'm looking forward to them doing it then. Um, also on the twenty-fifth, Senator Anwar, Representative Foster, Representative Hall, I co-hosted a fundraiser to benefit the Trolley Museum. Special thanks to Representative Foster for her, her hard work in organizing that event, um, and that raised more than three thousand dollars for the museum. On the twenty-sixth, Charlie, you were there as well, and your wife, there was a great time. Um, on the twenty-sixth, the BMX State Park Committee held their annual rubber duck race, and the American Heritage Trucker Commission held their annual cardboard boat race. These great organizations have now been hosting these for ten years, um, and it's a great summer event to look forward to each year. I want to give a special recognition to Southern Auto Auction, who on June twenty-ninth celebrated their seventy-fifth anniversary. For three quarters of a century, Southern Auto has been a major employer in our community, major economic driver, and an often silent, strong benefactor of local charities. The latter part was on full display last week when they raised a hundred thousand dollars for local charities in less than five minutes. It was simply amazing to see in person, um, and the charities that they benefited, again, I'm gonna get three of them and not four. But there were four charities that will benefit, the Five Quarter Cup, Alex's Lemonade Stand, Connecticut Children's Medical Center, and that same one that I can't. Um, to make the most lasting impact in municipal government, leaders oftentimes need to think outside the box and be a little bit creative. Um, over the last few weeks, I've spent time pursuing several different ideas that kind of fall into that category. Um, regionalized incentivization. Um regionalized incentivization, engagement with the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving and understanding best practices around tax and for financing as a development tool. Uh on a regional basis, I've had the opportunity to chair the Legislative Committee for the Capital Regional Council of Governments for the last year or so. And we've begun discussions about what that legislative package would look like in the next year in terms of finding incentives for municipalities to either share staff or share uh responsibilities in a way that's economically advantageous to the participating towns without foregoing local identity, which you know, in in towns the size of ours in our area, local identity is a very important thing, and so they're working on legislation that will create kind of a clearinghouse hub for um positions that make some sense to share across municipal boards. And I think that just makes sense for everybody in the world. Yesterday, Community Services Director Melissa Maltese and I met with the C-suite leaders of the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, including their CEO Jay Williams. We had a robust and creative discussion about how best to get East Windsor more engaged with the foundation, the foundation more engaged with the town. Um and to think a little bit more creatively about sustainability for um certain funding availability and service needs that may be beneficial to the community in the long term. Um it was a conversation where everybody came to the table with with a notepad and some and an open mind and started thinking about like, how can we think to the next level of things? As an example, you know, if funding were available to the Hartford Foundation that were endowed for the town of East Windsor, we then draw off of that for services that that we wouldn't be able to facilitate in the budget, particularly around mental health as the conversation. Um so more to come on that, but it was, I I was very grateful for their leadership team of the Hartford Foundation for providing that time um and for that conversation, and I'm hoping to see more of them in the town of East Windsor. You all were, most of you were here tonight when we heard uh from attorney Mike Andrew Anna talking about the benefits of taxing the financing, how it could potentially be applied and and how we could potentially use that as a springboard to grow our tax base, so I'll skip over that a bit. By now, everyone should have received their July property tax bill. Uh the mill rate, the mill rate in East Windsor went down year over year, but I've uh heard from a number of folks about increases in their motor vehicle taxes. This is happening all over Connecticut and is directly tied to changing valuations, particularly concerning used cars. In my own case, for example, my car tax has increased by about fifty dollars over last year despite additional aid from the state to control those tax costs. This is specifically due to the increase in market value on new and used cars. Doesn't have anything to do with the um the state's new tax uh cap. Doesn't have anything to do with municipal rate, which in fact went down. Um but it does have to do with the changing valuation around uh you new and used cars. But lots of people are are talking about that, and so anyone who feels they've been unfairly agreed by the new valuations, there is a remedy available to you. Um if anybody thinks that they their tax bill is not appropriately assessed, you can go to the Board of Assessment Appeals on Saturday, September seventeen at nine thirty right here um for uh an appeals hearing. It's going to be on a first come, first served basis, no appointments, so get here, line up, have proof of the your valuation claim, and they have the power to make some adjustments. For more information about that, um you can visit the Board of Assessment Appeals website or call the tax collector, tax assessor's office. I'll call the tax collector as well.
I want a reminder you insist.
Yeah. A recent article in the Connecticut Inside Investigator News laid out some very disturbing allegations of conduct in Department of Public Works. Uh because of personnel issues, there are a number of things that I cannot speak to publicly, and I will not speak to publicly. Last May, allegations were filed with me concerning sexual harassment issues in in the developing. At that time, I immediately requested the East Windsor Police Department conduct a full comprehensive investigation of the allegations and to fully pursue any other information that may be discovered during that investigation. Those complaints were found by the police department to be unsubstantiated. The article does not mention a number of important points. The timeframe when that was uh first put forward was a year ago. They were found to be unsubstantiated. Anyone proven responsible for inappropriate conduct is discredited. The entire department was required to participate in sensitivity, anti-harassment, and anti-racism training. And as a result of the initial allegations, all town employees are now required to participate in sexual harassment training annually, which is twice as often as is required by state law. I was shocked and disappointed as anyone who read that article. Appropriate steps were taken to ensure no further instances of any such behavior would be permitted. When the reports were issued, any substantiated allegation was addressed. Departmental employees responsible for the inappropriate conduct were disciplined, and every departmental employee was put on notice that any further allegations of discrimination or harassment proven to be true would result in immediate termination. To date, no further issues have been reported. A number of points that were raised in the Inside Investigator article were only the allegations, not the findings were not included in that. That is a shame. As terrible as this is, I am thankful that these circumstances were brought to my attention a year ago so that I could take the necessary steps to address them. That will be all I have to say on that. Great.
Um, yes, um I only had uh two meetings scheduled to answer their last or the question meeting, and both of them happened to be on the same night. One is the Water Pollution Control Authority um in special meeting that the Capitol Commission of maybe had, um I had to choose those capital improvement because I hadn't attended any, there's they haven't added. Um but I won't bore everybody with detail because um Adam Man was kind enough to come here today and explain everything to you that I would have had to make before anyway, so.
Charlie? Okay, I didn't really have the written report, but I did attend um the East Windsor BMX and Skate Park uh meeting that was held on Monday, June twenty-seven. Um not a lot going on there. They just um were praising the great success of the rubber duck race. They didn't have final numbers as to how much they had earned yet. Um and now they're focusing their attentions on um getting a purchase orders um established for more equipment for the skate park. And that's it.
Did you say how much was in their balance? Did they talk about that?
They did talk about that. I don't recall the number. It's it's a good amount of money. But they need a lot of money to buy the next set of equipment that they want because it comes in like sets. They have to do it in sections, and it's a lot of money in each section, so. Out. Yeah, so I've been on vacation for the last week, and I raced here at a high rate of speed from central Vermont to try to make it to the tip thing. Um so I'm going to hold my report because my notes are at my house until our next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And I yield back the balance of my time to Sarah.
Sure.
Okay, on June twenty-second, I attended the Board of Education meeting. A technology update was given by Adam Souzer, who is currently providing the school district with contracted services for technology. His company employs forty I T professionals that only work with schools and municipalities. His future work with the East Windsor School System would include the transition from Microsoft Office to Google Classroom and offering virtual support system for students, parents, and teachers, incident tracking, and best practices for purchasing. The Finance Subcommittee held their first meeting, um that they haven't met in so long. Ryan Galloway informed the board that the finances are still looking good and to be on the track, right track for the end of the year. Certified staff balloon checks have been processed, and he is in the process of converting job salaries for July first into munis. Also, all grants that expire on June thirtieth have been drawn down. The board unanimously gave Superintendent Dr. Patrick Tudren a favorable evaluation and voted to extend his contract for an additional year. The evaluation will be posted on the school district's website if anyone's interested. Uh an out-of-state field trip for high school students for the Washington D.C. Close-Up Program was approved for next school year. Discussion took place on how to fund the Broadbrook School boiler replacement. The board voted to use eighty-five thousand dollars from the expected fiscal year twenty twenty-two surplus for an initial initial payment, and we're considering using the two percent fund or coming to the town for an appropriation. It was then decided that pending the auditor's approval to encumber the balance of the boiler with the balance of the fiscal year twenty-two funds. Uh we already discussed the share cost agreement between the town and the Board of Education. Um the Arts and Culture Commission held their first of three arts and craft showcases in conjunction with the Summer Concert Series at East Windsor Park on June thirtieth, featuring four local artists. The next one will be next Thursday, July fourteenth. The Economic Development Commission meeting was canceled on July fifth. Uh also, East Windsor Social Services is in need of items for their annual back-to-school backpack program. Um a complete list of items needed can be found on the East Windsor Social Services Facebook page, and donations can be dropped off to their office at twenty-five School Street. And if anyone's looking for something fun to do tomorrow night, there will be live music at the Connecticut Trolley Museum in the courtyard from six to nine P M. Um general admission rates apply, and that will include uh the Fire Museum, uh the music, and a trolley ride. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Uh, all right, we will turn to public participation. This is the public second opportunity to address members of the board. Same rules, the first time I'll turn first to anybody who is here in the room, um and then I'll turn to anybody who is online. Um if you would like to speak, please identify yourself by name and address, um and you'll have the floor for up to three minutes. Mr. Anderson, name and address.
Well, Anderson, eighty-nine H three Broadbrook. I'm going to add something to your report, actually, on the motor vehicle tax. Personal experience. If you think there's an error in your assessment, you can go directly to the assessor's office and explain what the error may be, as opposed to, I don't like to know. Yeah. Which I understand that people don't like the numbers, but I have that experience and the sessions office has got some great people. They solve problems quickly. So, um that's number one. Number two, just for informational purposes, the transition at the school system for email from Microsoft Outlook
Oh, yeah.
to Google something or other, Gmail, whatever, is a very interesting situation directly involved in the employee side of that disaster. And uh we get bombarded on a regular basis with emails from Google saying you have to set up uh you know, multi-factor identification by July thirty-one, or your account will be closed. But there is no transition. There's no accounts in cheap mail. Nothing's working, and the answer from at least the principal of the Broadbrook School is, I T hasn't told us anything yet. But we get these emails on a regular basis, not a complaint, information. It's a very difficult process. I'm sure it's going to work out before the school year starts. But in the meantime, all employees have to monitor email on a very regular basis. Even if you're not working because nobody knows when this transition will actually take place. It's only for information. It's it's fun. I'm sure it's going to work out for the better. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Whatever.
Is there anyone else here present who would like to address members of the board? Anybody else here present? Is there anybody online who would like to address members of the board? Please identify yourself with your name and your address. Seeing none, um we have no further business. A motion to adjourn will be in order.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It's non-debatable. All in favor of adjournment at eight fifty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at eight fifty.